Welcome. I think we'll call the...
That's on.
Can you hear me?
That's on.
Hello? Yeah. Okay. So, we'll call the meeting in order, um, six thirty-one. Uh, so... Lincoln County Courthouse. This meeting of the Lincoln County Planning Commission will begin with just a few introductory remarks. This meeting is being streamed live and when adjourned and posted, it'll be available at any time at LincolnCountySD.org. The order of events tonight will be as follows. For each public hearing, staff will introduce the agenda item and present a summary of the staff report. The applicant will then be asked to explain their proposal in further detail and to answer any questions from the County Planning Commission. We'll then open the floor to public comment, first for persons in support of the application and then for persons in opposition of the application. When you step up to the podium, please state your name and address and speak into the microphone. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. Lastly, decisions on conditional use permit applications may be appealed to the County Board of Commissioners by submitting a letter to the County Planning and Zoning Office within five days. Thank you for your cooperation. We'll start with roll call. Mr. Ensted?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jungling?
Here.
Mrs. Sweater?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Scott's also here. Um, we'll now approve the meeting minutes from last meeting. Are there any corrections? If anybody can see. Toby, any corrections? Any agency?
Uh, no, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Ask for a motion in a second to approve the minutes.
Motion by Boots to approve the minutes.
Second by Jungling.
Okay, it's been moved properly seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Um, before we do the meeting minutes for this minute, or for this meeting, I just want to thank Toby and Drew for whatever you guys did to rearrange this so we could have this on Tuesday night and work it around the township meetings that everybody had to have last night. So, if anybody's wondering, that's why the meeting tonight is on Tuesday, because every township had to have their tax assessment meeting last night, and we thought there were items on the agenda that township people would be interested in, and so they worked with us when we got the meeting moved. And let's remember next year when we approve the agenda for the year, let's make that change, because it happens every year. So, with that, can we approve the meeting minutes for today? Have a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve, Jungling.
Ensted, second.
Okay. It's been moved properly seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay? We will move on to public input of non-agenda items. This is the part of the meeting that if you've got anything to say that is not on the agenda, it would be time to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and let us hear what your thoughts are. Okay, seeing none, we will move to our first agenda item. Mr. Brown.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Toby Brown representing the County Planning. Uh, this first item before you on the agenda is an application for a conditional use permit. Uh, this conditional use permit is to construct warehousing space of approximately sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, the subject property is approximately a little over six thousand feet to the west of the city of Worthing. This would be across Interstate twenty-nine. Uh, subject property is zoned light industrial. Uh, this property is part of a development that was approved a number of years ago. Uh, this particular southern portion of the property was never developed. It was re-subdivided by the applicant, or I should say by the owner that previous to the applicant, and that process went through the city of Worthing. The city of Worthing's growth area subdivision authority now covers this particular property, so they had jurisdiction to approve the replating of this property. But the staff did work with city staff from Worthing, and the plans that were approved or changed, I would say, are consistent with the plans that were approved by the county. Um, as far as, the only thing that changed is really kind of the lot layout. Uh, subject property is undeveloped. Again, as I mentioned previously, uh, subject property is currently zoned I-1 light industrial. Um, as you can see, uh, one kind of benefit to this project is, is that the road, Boondocks Avenue, did stop just to the north of this property, uh, but the current owner, or I should say that the owner that previous to the applicant, or the applicant's representative, did finish the improvements to this subdivision, uh, so the road is fully paved and constructed to the south to the access to this property. Uh, this is accessed off of Boondocks as a subdivision development road, uh, so it's governed by, uh, the homeowners association or within that development. Uh, applicant did submit a concept plan to staff, essentially identified the construction of mini warehouse, warehousing type structures on the property. Again, uh, the zoning ordinance of Lincoln County requires that warehousing over twenty-thousand square feet, if it's going to exceed twenty-thousand square feet in the I-1 light industrial district, uh, does require a conditional use permit. Uh, this is pretty common as far as warehousing in the I-1 light industrial district, and so, uh, they did submit a site plan to include warehousing of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, staff did review this application. There are no specific performance standards for warehousing within the zoning regulations. Uh, staff ensures, though, that the setbacks are met, uh, that the access aisles are met, um, and then additional requirements will be met when they do submit a building permit after approval, potential approval of this application. Uh, so staff did review this application, uh, did identify that as proposed that it would meet the standards of the ordinance. Um, staff does recommend, if approved, uh, that the seven, or the six conditions that were recommended in the staff report would be part of the permit. Uh, staff did post the property. The applicant did send letters of notification this public hearing to adjacent property owners. As of this meeting, uh, staff has received no communication from adjacent property owners or anyone, uh, having any concerns or questions about the application. So, again, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit with the six conditions as stated in the staff report. Uh, with that, if you have any questions, you have for staff at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brown? Mr. Jungling?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, was there, so if there's any, like, site drainage and all that, they'll have to go through the city of Worthing, is that correct?
So, uh, the original plan did have some detention on the site, and that wasn't fulfilled at that phase one, but what I call this is phase two. Uh, they did work with the county and the city, and there is detention out there, and they actually constructed it. It's constructed. So, it's, I'll say it's better than what was previously approved. So, yeah, I'd say drainage from our standpoint, but in saying that, the city has full jurisdiction over drainage on this property, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Ensted?
No.
Mr. Schmidt? No. Mr. Sweater, Boots? No. Okay.
So, the applicant is the contractor in this application, and he is in attendance today, so...
Very good. Thank you. All right, could I ask the applicant to come forward and state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about what you want to do here?
Zach Porter, uh, with New Age Builders, twenty-three-hundred Northwest Port Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, five-seven-one-oh-seven. Uh, this is going to be another, uh, storage, uh, complex. Uh, we've done others in the area on Boondocks. Um, they're going to be an all-metal structure, non-combustible, uh, very similar to what's just down the street as you come in. Uh, it'll be fully fenced, uh, to meet all the rules and regulations of, uh, the permit and, uh, everything, uh, the buildings are all met with county and state building codes, uh, snow loads, uh, et cetera. Uh, it'll be, uh, like I said, uh, security fenced, uh, lighted, uh, and more than likely security cameras.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? No? Down here? Mr. Jungling?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Say, Zach, will you intend to use this as a storage or contractor shops, or what's your intent?
Storage only.
Okay.
And rent, storage you're going to rent?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep. Zach, how many units are you planning on putting in there?
Oh, I think phase one is roughly eighty-one, eighty-three. What is it? Sorry.
And will any of these have electricity in them, or will they just be?
Yeah, each unit will have a light on a timer switch and one outlet for trickle chargers and such. Well, I want to see... Eighty-three, I believe, is what the number was.
Is there any specific codes for that as far as, you know, whether being a storage unit and, you know, not being attended regularly with the electrical and people running trickle chargers and, you know, they'll have a extension cord with, uh, you know, all this other stuff running about, you know, to me, it's just, it's a fire hazard and, you know, when, you know, outside of your control, somebody runs an extension cord and has four different power strips hooked onto that and, you know, trying to charge who knows what, is there any type of requirements for that, or is it just still just a basic...
They'll all be, they'll all pass state electrical codes. Jerry would know better than I would, but, uh, they all have ECI or ECF outlets to where they've got breakers in them.
Well, this is my biggest concern is, you know, not necessarily, you know, the one or if they have a fire in one, but if that would carry over into the other ones and cause damage to them, that might be, sometimes the homeowners insurance doesn't cover that.
And like I said, they're all steel frame. Not that steel can't burn, but the likelihood is a lot less, uh, non-combustible. Um, and I did clarify, it's eighty-three units.
Okay.
And every building is under the twelve-thousand square footage, uh, to permit for, uh, non-fire separation or fire suppression system, so it'll be...
Zach, if you have phase one is eighty-three, what's the total, when you're totally built out, what will you have there?
The rest of the phase is really just, um, an idea, um, that Sayer had drawn on their initial plans. Nothing's really set in stone.
Okay.
Um, I would say sizable to a little bit larger. It looks like there's one more row, but nothing that the owner's looking at any time in the near future.
Okay. Any more questions? Zach, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I have a question or a statement or a thought, maybe it is. Um, so something we deal with about monthly, um, and sometimes multiple times in a month. There are people that want to come get a conditional use permit and operate a business out of a storage unit. And, um, it's become... Something that maybe doesn't make that much sense in a lot of parts of the county due to what it does to our sheriff's department, what it does to, um, without having fire protections and things like this. And so, what are your thoughts about that and these units? I mean, are you, are you putting any restriction on that, or would you be opposed to any restriction on that?
No.
Do you see this more...
I'm not the owner, but I can verify for him that that'll not happen, and that's why, uh, more than likely, he'll have security cameras to watch any suspicious activity. People that are coming and going a lot from their units, um, but no, these are not intended to be contractor shops.
Okay.
And, uh...
So, and I'm not saying I want to necessarily, but if you wanted to add a condition that way, I mean, I realize that, I think condition number three maybe kind of takes care of that, but would you be opposed to another condition?
I don't think the owner would.
Okay.
I wouldn't. Um, I know that's not his intention, and so I don't think that would be a big deal.
You understand what I'm asking?
Absolutely. At least on phase one. Like I said, phase two is just a dream someday.
Okay. All right, very good. That's all I had. Anybody else? All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll ask anybody else that's in support of the application to come forward. Seeing none, is there anybody that's in opposition of the application to come forward? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comment. Uh, we'll entertain a motion for approval in a second, and then we'll have some discussion.
I'll make a motion approval with existing six conditions. Jungling?
Second, Boots.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Um, we'll just start with discussion down with Commissioner Ensted. Do you have any initial comments?
No, no, I think all mine got addressed.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Well, I think he's covered the waterfront fairly well.
Okay. Mr. Jungling?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think this does kind of meet what we're trying to do with the new comprehensive plan, as in areas of similar, um, as a zone that way already, so, yeah, I really have no issue with this at all.
Okay.
I, uh, all the questions I had have been answered, and, um, it seems to be a good fit for that area.
Mr. Boots?
No, most everything I had was answered when you asked about the contractor shop, and then again, this, this fits out in that area with, with storage, so I have a plan on supporting.
Good. Yeah, and, uh, I will as well, and I think it, I think as far as, uh, the spot on the map, that's about exactly what we would want these things. It's what the comprehensive plan has told us. Um, as far as my initial question or my concern, whatever it was, um, the more I thought about it, the more I'm thinking about it is, um, those would all get, I don't know that they're going to say it has to be a condition added, because it's all get taken care of on an individual basis, as people would apply for conditional use permits if that's, if that's what this ends up being. Um, so, I guess the only thing I would ask is that you maybe encourage the owners and the renters, um, that this is, we don't approve a lot of conditional use permits to run businesses out of storage units, and so, if somebody gets their hopes up thinking that's what they're going to do, um, just tell them there's a process they need to go through first, and we'll have to, uh, you know, we'll handle them on a case-by-case basis, so... So, with that, we'll call the roll. Mr. Boots?
Aye.
Mr. Sweater?
Aye.
Mr. Jungling?
Aye.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ensted?
Yes.
Mr. Scott is also a yes, so, thank you. Mr. Brown, number two?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, the second item on the agenda, and I'll get back to it once, is... So, the second item on this agenda is an application for a conditional use permit for class-one major home occupation. Uh, subject property is approximately fifty-three-hundred, a little over fifty-three-hundred feet to the northeast of the city of Beersford. Uh, subject property is zone A-1 agricultural, as is all surrounding properties. Uh, subject property is improved. Uh, this picture's a little outdated. Uh, we actually just flew new aerials this last week, uh, so we should be getting new aerials for the entire county, but this aerial, uh, shows some structures on there that have been removed. There's actually been a new single-family dwelling that's been constructed on the property. Um, the applicant is proposing, uh, to utilize, uh, a portion of the new single-family dwelling, which would primarily be the garage space, and then the accessory building on the property for, uh, proposed, uh, class-one major home occupation. And again, uh, Lincoln County, we, we have different scales or levels of, um, home occupations. The first one being a minor home occupation, primarily minor home occupations or activities that occur within the dwelling, um, and then typically limited to employees of just, uh, the, the homeowners associated with it, and then typically limited to the amount of visits that you're going to have on the property. The next scale would be a class-one major home occupation. Uh, those do allow employees outside of those living on the property, and it does allow, um, the occupation to occur in, uh, portions other than the, the dwelling. So, in this case, he's proposing to operate out of an accessory building, existing accessory building on the property. Uh, so, staff did review this application, did have some dialogue with the applicant, identifying specifically, you know, the scale and the, and the, uh, what different types of, what I'll say, intensities of the application would be. And so, clearly identified, uh, through the narrative and through some discussions with the applicant, uh, the particular occupation is welding slash repairs, um, take place within the detached shop, which is twelve-hundred-and-eighty square feet, which does meet the requirement that it's less than two thousand square feet. Uh, the applicant is proposing that there is two employees, it'd be, uh, the homeowner and then an additional employee. Hours of occupation would be nine to six P.M. Uh, parts delivers would be three to four times a week. Uh, most sales would though be, would be off-site through social media, there wouldn't be any advertising. It would be a minor sign that would be located on the accessory building, which is allowed by the ordinance. Uh, so, as you're aware, uh, there is some pretty extensive performance standards for class-one major home occupations. We've regurgitated them in the standard conditions that we placed onto this application or onto the permit. Uh, so, staff did post property. Uh, the applicant did mail, uh, notice of the public, of this public hearing to adjacent properties. Uh, we did receive correspondence from one of the neighbors. What I'll say is this, this, this property is pretty isolated. There is a house that's, the closest house would have been, uh, what we placed before you this evening was a, a letter of support, uh, from the property owner, um, but, uh, so, we haven't heard any, uh, opposition to this particular application. Uh, so, staff does feel that this application, uh, is as proposed, will meet the standards of a class-one major home occupation. Uh, the comprehensive plan does support, uh, major home occupations, class-one major home occupations in specific areas of the county, the rural area of county, if it doesn't take away the primary use of the property, which will be residential use. Uh, so, staff is confident that the, that the applicant, uh, will continue to operate the property as a single-family dwelling, uh, with a side minor home or a class-one major home occupation with it. Uh, but just to ensure that there is compliance, uh, we do recommend the conditions, the standard conditions that we have, uh, one or two, and then the rest, three through fourteen, or three through thirteen are the standard conditions, and then fourteen is the general condition that we have, that they have to be in, in compliance with other regulations. Um, so, again, in our discussions with the applicant, we do feel that they will be in compliance with the proposal. Staff does recommend approval of this application. With that, if you have any questions, you have for staff.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Seeing none?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Okay, can we ask the applicant to come forward, please? Uh, state your name and address for the record, tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
I'm Keegan Orquist, uh, four-seven-two-four-seven-two-ninety-fifth Street, Beersford, South Dakota, five-seven-zero-zero-four.
Okay.
Um, I own a welding fabrication business, uh, just me and one, uh, employee right now. Don't really have any plans of growing much past that. Uh, most of our sales are, are done online, um, and basically over social media, so, very limited kind of traffic, I guess. It's kind of a, kind of a closed circle of basically just rural, uh, small-town people that, you know, basically do work for and whatnot, so... Uh, he, the, the one building, uh, the new building is a shop-house style, um, building, which is roughly two thousand square foot of house, and then the shop is roughly sixty by seventy, um, which houses a lot of our vehicles and, uh, basically my kids' toys. Um, and then we do, uh, some sheet metal work in there. Uh, most of the other, like, all the welding stuff is done in a separate building. Uh, obviously, it's, it's hard to see on the plan, but it's, uh, quite a ways away. Uh, just honestly, for fire purposes, too, we moved it back quite a bit. I'm on the Beersford Fire and Ambulance, so, you know, that's, obviously, I don't really want to go to my own house and have to put out a fire, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty much it, I think.
Cool. Any questions for the applicant?
Uh, yes. Boots, um, on the welding, is this like for farm equipment or handrails, or just kind of all the above?
Honestly, all the above, yeah. We do a lot of, like, I mean, farm repair, sheet metal stuff. We work on race cars, um, which they're all owned by a separate, you know, they're all personally owned by the people that I do it for, but, uh, yeah, pretty much anything and everything that can be welded or fabricated, we work on.
Thank you.
Cool. Anyone else?
How long you been doing this, just for curiosity?
Um, I worked at Wilson Trailer in Lenox, like, ten years, nine years ago? About eight or nine years, yeah, we've done it full-time, so...
Good training.
Yeah, trial by fire, that's what I do.
Very good. No more questions? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else in favor of the application? Come forward. Commissioners, you do have a email printed off in front of you. Um, I guess I'll read it, I believe this one. So, it just says, "This is the neighbor across the road, Elizabeth Rand, to whom it may concern. I am the closest, less than a quarter-mile neighbor, uh, to Keegan and Michaela Orquist, who are seeking a permit to run their business on their property. The business does not seem to cause any traffic issues on our road. I am not hearing any kind of noise, let alone any excessive noise. I have no concerns about their, about their having a business on their property. Please feel free to contact me if we have any questions or additional concerns." With that, we'll close the floor to people in favor. Is there anyone in opposition? All right, seeing none, uh, we'll close the floor to public comment, entertain a motion for approval in a second.
Motion to approve, Ensted.
Okay.
Second, Boots.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, any discussion? Mr. Ensted, we'll start with you. Fourteen conditions.
No, I guess, you know, it, like, it kind of fits of, you know, kind of the right place and without a lot of neighbors, that makes it helpful.
Well, okay. Mr. Schmidt?
My only comment is I'd like to see a young couple take up a pursuit and become good taxpayers in Lincoln County. Thank you.
Mr. Boots? Uh, no other comments. Mr. Sweater?
It looks like he knows what he's doing and what he's after, so it looks like a good fit.
Well, Mr. Jungling?
Yeah, no, I, again, I hope all success for everything, and, um, I just try to be a good neighbor. If you do get bigger, and if you do get bigger, you gotta move out, so, that's it. Good luck.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I, I know one thing we should be assured of. I, I see the business manager sitting right beside her. I have no doubt that it will be successful.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be in support as well, and I, uh, just to, uh, elaborate on what Commissioner Schmidt said, I mean, anytime we get young people to stick around their county and, and want to do something, I think that's good, and, and it sure sounds like the one person that's closest to you, um, you're sure being respectful of them, and, and so I would have no problem with it. So, I'll go ahead and call the roll with, uh, Commissioner Ensted?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Jungling?
Yes.
Mr. Sweater?
Yes.
Mr. Boots?
Yes.
Mr. Scott is also a yes, so, thanks, guys, and good luck.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
All right. Mr. Brown? Number three.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, as I noted in the briefing memo, that the Board of Commissioners established that, uh, we called it the C.D.T.S.A.C., the Carbon Dioxide Transport and Storage Advisory Committee. Uh, that group started meeting in November of twenty-twenty-three and formally disbanded in December twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, out of those meetings, uh, county staff, uh, including legal counsel and myself, uh, worked with the committee. Uh, there was quite a bit of input, quite a bit of public testimony. Uh, out of that, we really focused that group on, uh, identifying ordinances for specific areas, um, and I should say, um, Commissioner Scott was also on the advisory committee as well, um, as well as, I guess, Planning Commissioner Sweater, too. So, um, throughout those sessions, really wanted to focus that, that group on, uh, the main issues that, that staff really identified, and that's that, uh, there really isn't any, uh, regulations within the current land use regulations to address carbon dioxide pipelines. And so, really wanted to focus on what land uses are important, um, what, what types of definitions were important, uh, what types of standards were important, and then also what type of zoning and, and the framework that was going to be there. And out of that, staff drafted four particular ordinances, um, and I'll go through each of those a little bit, um, and then I'll kind of get to a little bit about, uh, recommendations for this evening. Uh, so, the first ordinance would really, uh, so the, the first thing would be the definitions, and so these definitions are pulled from, uh, federal regulations or federal standards, and so, consistent with what the state of South Dakota has for different carbon dioxide pipeline definitions. Uh, this particular draft ordinance would add those definitions to the regulations, would amend the general neighborhood utility facility, which is, I'll, I'll say is where we currently handle all types of, uh, what I'll call, uh, infrastructure, water, gas, electric, uh, um, oil pipelines and those kind of things. As you can note, there is nothing in there for fluid or for essentially carbon dioxide. all types of what I'll call infrastructure, water, gas, electric, oil pipelines and those kind of things. As you can note, there is nothing in there for fluid or for essentially carbon dioxide. But this particular ordinance would establish permissive use. So again, in, in Lincoln County zoning regulations, there's really three types of uses. There's permissive uses, which are by right, that as you meet those standards, you typically don't need board approval. It goes directly to staff for administrative approval or a building permit, as long as the specific standards are met.
Toby, not to interrupt, but can you give it, give us just an example of that, like a different kind of example, just so people understand, like, I'm thinking like a farm shop would, would be that, maybe?
Agriculture.
An agricultural shop, if, if a farmer wanted to build a shop on their place, that would be a, as long as they met the, the standards, that'd be a permissive use, correct?
Correct. And honestly, I would respond that I would say we very rarely do permissive uses. The majority of things we do are conditional uses.
Right.
I mean, for everything, so. Then there's permitted special uses, which is, we'll call a hybrid in between a permissive use and a conditional use. Permissive uses are as long as you meet the prescribed conditions, you can proceed. If you don't, you flip it to a conditional use permit, and at that time, then the board, the, the planning commission could establish what those standards are. And then the third thing is a conditional use permit, which is those uses within the ordinance that, that the policymakers, the Board of Commissioners felt do require additional review or public hearing with it. So this, again, this particular ordinance would have established a permissive use, setback of three hundred and thirty feet from those, and I'm not going to go, I'll kind of, you know, briefly jump through these things. But then it established a setback of ten thousand five hundred and sixty feet from incorporated municipalities. And then we threw the catch-all that they have to comply with all federal, state, and local rules. And then something that we've never talked about, but that the task force talked about was carbon dioxide production facilities, which everyone talks about the pipeline, but the production facility, that's going to be an above-ground type facility. So this particular ordinance would, would add that as a conditional use in the A-one agricultural district. And I should specify that the permissive use above would, this particular draft would be in the A-one agricultural district. And then same thing with the standards as far as the carbon dioxide. So as you can see, the carbon dioxide production facility, there would be no standards to be a conditional use permit. Ninety-nine percent of the conditional uses permits currently, or conditional uses currently in Lincoln County have no sets, form of standard. If you notice, I said that this evening with those first two. So this one, the performance standards would be set by the planning commission as you go through that process. And then there was an additional requirement that, those of you where, as I mentioned this evening, is that we do, under ordinance, require that we, that we post signage and that the applicant notifies within five hundred feet, except in the occurrence of a wind energy conversion system and a concentrated animal feeding operation, we do require those to be notified within one mile of the property line. So this would add that, include carbon dioxide production facilities as the notification. And you say, why isn't the, the pipeline? Well, because the pipeline would have been a permissive use in this case. The second draft would have been a permitted special use, same definitions. It established a three hundred and thirty feet as a standard, but a permitted special use, and then a minimum ten thousand five hundred and sixty feet from municipality, same standard. And this would be only in the A-one agricultural district. So again, if they didn't meet the standard, they could request a conditional use permit, which in that case, there would be no setback. And so the setback would be established by the planning commission, whether it's greater or lower, that would be up to the planning commission. And carbon dioxide facility, same thing would be a conditional use in the district. And then we did add in this particular ordinance that it would also be allowed, I think this is in the other one, too, in the R C Rec. Conservation District, so the A-one and the Rec. Conservation District for both of those ones. And the third ordinance would be to make it a conditional use permit, and you're familiar with the, the committee, that I refer to these as non-standard conditional use permits or conditional uses, because you don't have a setback, you don't have regulations with it, it just requires what we did tonight, for you as the board to consider through the public hearing, through public comment, you would establish the standards or conditions within it. You know, typically, staff does give the recommendation, but on many occasions, the planning commission adds and detracts from some of those recommendations. And then the fourth and last one, this one is a little bit unique. There was some dialogue about what if we didn't do conditional use permits, what if we did rezone? And so this particular ordinance would require that the, that the facilities be within the I-one light industrial district, so that would require a rezoning process. And so that's a little bit more intense. You have to go through the planning commission for a recommendation, and then you have to go through the Board of Commissioners for approval on that. What's of note to that is, by state statute, the, the boards can't add any specific conditions to a rezone. They would just approve it as that. But then once it is a rezone, then it would be a permissive use, so it'd be by right at that time. So in January, so the, the committee formalized these recommendations in December, these were, these were provided to the Board of Commissioners as a report. The Board of Commissioners, I believe it was in January, remanded it back to the planning commission. So in accordance with state law, there can be no ordinance amendments to the zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, planning and zoning regulations without a recommendation from the planning commission with, after a public hearing by the planning commission. So it was remanded back to you. We didn't meet the requirements to get it on the February agenda, but as you know, there was discussion, we, we did have a work session in February, that the legislature was working on a bill, and that legislature bill didn't get passed until, I believe, the last week of the legislative session. So your recommendation was for staff to set a public hearing, you know, depending on where the state went with the legislation. Staff needed to publish for this public hearing because state law requires that we publish weeks before the public hearing, so we didn't know, you know, legislature, are they going to pass the bill or not pass the bill. So we proceeded with doing, publishing for the public hearing, kept it on the agenda for this evening. Really, the three options, and Drew's here tonight to answer any questions that you have, but I've had some extensive discussions with legal counsel, and really, there's kind of, what I would say is three main options. The first option is, is you just give a recommendation on the four ordinances, provide it back to the Board of Commissioners. Second option would be is, well, I guess there's only two options, I think about it, but second option would be is you would postpone your recommendation, and I think the postponement would be for legal counsel and staff to really kind of dig in-depth into what, you know, the proposed Senate bill does, and what the implications of that would be for these proposed regulations. And I say that in a way, is that, you know, we've always wanted to proceed with something as the planning commission, and I don't speak for you guys, but that's really your roles that I've understood, that you've really been kind of boots on the ground with this issue, and you've, you've really proceeded with some type of recommendation. Where I think we're at this stage, though, with, with the, with the legislation, and again, you know, people are talking about referendums and all that stuff, we don't, we can't speculate on that, but really where we're at tonight, though, is you could say, we want to do this right, though. And so one of the things that was added in the, in the legislation was, is that we can charge a fee for linear foot of the pipeline, so some of those things we might want to add into the ordinance and recommendations. The, the Board of Commissioners also, in their remand, asked for a recommendation on fees associated with it. And so we've talked about it as internally as staff, and I've talked with legal counsel about it, and our recommendation to that, to that item would be, getting back to that other item, but getting back to that item, I think our recommendation would be is, if everything would get passed, we would really see if it would require a conditional use permit, if the board is able to do that, that would, staff would recommend that the fee for the application for a conditional use permit would be the two hundred and fifty dollars per parcel. So the application we would receive, if you could do a conditional use permit, would just be a singular application for the pipeline route, and then staff would do a public hearing on it, but as you saw tonight, we charged two hundred and fifty dollars per property. So that would be consistent with how we would treat that. And if it's not a conditional use, and if that's not the direction that the board would go, then we would recommend that state statute, if that, if the legislation is, was adopted, takes effect, that it allows the county to charge up to one dollar per linear foot of the, of the carbon dioxide pipeline, that you would want to consider maybe charging, you know, it's up to the one dollar, but if it was a permissive use or a permitted use, you can go through that process. But, you know, in all in all, I think we've talked about it, and I think Eric can speak to this, is that we don't have any regulations for carbon dioxide pipelines. We do need at least, at least some definitions and some of those things, whether or not we can go into the standards and the regulations, some of that still needs to be kind of gone through the process, but there is some definite steps that the county should, does need to take with that. So with that, I, I'll step aside and just answer any questions that you might have for staff at this time, so.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Brown?
So Toby, basically, you, you mentioned two options that you have, that this board can do. One is to send it back to the commission, okay? And that would be following selecting one of the options, correct?
No, I think you would, you would make a recommendation.
Or send them all back?
Well, I, I would see after public testimony, you could vote on all four.
And the other one is to postpone.
Yeah, and then the third option would be is probably to, you could, in the, in the, in the process of the postponement, would be to maybe direct staff to work with the commissioners to see if there's additional remand questions that they want to send back to you, so.
Again, and I think, whether it's, I think another option would be is we just take each one of these, one by one, vote on them, and we maybe only pass two of them back to the commission level, or three, you know, if, if we wanted to sort through them here first. I'm not saying that's the best thing, but that, that is another option. We wouldn't have sent all four.
And, and.
Or we get both to send up, right?
Well, the, the recommendation's going to go back, either recommend, deny, or approval. So they'll all four, yep, they'll all four go back, yeah.
You can't pick out, you can't.
They asked for a remand for your recommendation on the four ordinances.
On all four.
Yeah.
But we could say we recommend three of them and not one.
You could deny one of them.
Yeah.
Recommend and now, yep.
Yeah.
But like any night, though, I would encourage you to take public comment, see if there's anything that sways your opinion on that part of it, so, yep.
Yeah. Does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Brown, so as these are written now, there's no dollars involved with these, correct? I mean, we would have the two hundred and fifty dollar permit per parcel for unconditional, if, if that's the way it went, but the dollar per foot and all that, that's recommended in Bill two oh one, that was not in this ordinance. So if we did recommend one to the commission, could they add that later, or would that be better added now before we recommend something to the Board of Commissioners?
Depends what your guys' preferences, you could just make an additional fifth motion to say we'd recommend this filing fee, and, you know, if it's not a conditional use permit, it would be this linear foot fee, so.
One more question, then. Well, maybe more, but just one more.
You have it before.
So the, the, what they're calling the Landowners' Bill of Rights and all that, is there any part of that that we would want to put in our ordinance, too, or is that kind of addressed through the state and not really part of this, where more definitions, setbacks, and whatnot?
Yeah, I think we're still working through that process, but there is definite things you would want to add for the road improvements and the road, you know, surety, I guess, on that part of it, so, yeah.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing, Mr. Brown, is there's still, from two oh one, as a county, we're still not a hundred percent sure of what all that means according to the four ordinances that were, you know, came from the ad hoc committee before two oh one. That makes sense, you want me to rephrase that, I guess? We're still working through some issues.
Yeah, it, uh, state law did something, we're still trying to figure out how, how we navigate it, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we aren't doing anything wrong if we, if we continue forward and, and make these recommendations back to the Board of County Commissioners. I mean, I, I think we can, we can sure do that, you know.
To me, I think. Yeah, they asked you to do the, do the remand, yeah.
I mean, I think we can sure do that, and then, you know, that, that, that would give those guy, you know, that board probably a month before they got to deal with it, and they're maybe learned something by them, too, right?
Ultimately, then, they would also decide, do we remand it back if there's something else, too?
And this could, that could volley.
Correct, yeah.
A few times, maybe.
Yeah, and ultimately.
It won't, though, will it, Commissioner Schmidt?
I have a reserve comment, Mr. Chairman.
But yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that, that'll most probably happen anyway.
Can't speculate, I think.
But I mean, there's a real high, high possibility that, that once the commissioners get it narrowed down, they're going to send it back, we're going to review this a few times, maybe.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Toby?
Toby, in two oh one, I was just reading that they set, set the dollar per linear foot on the carbon pipeline with half of it to be reprimanded or used for property tax relief. When looking at some of the other counties that have placed the per linear foot on the pipeline, I see that they've placed a considerably, considerable more amount than the dollars. So was the dollar a strict set by the two oh one? I see many haha counties allows up to three hundred dollars per linear foot.
Yeah, the, the Senate bill's capped it at a dollar.
Capped it at a dollar.
Up, up to a dollar.
Yeah. So. Supercede whatever the count is.
Don't ask me where that came from, I don't. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I will just ask for, could, could we have Mr. Group, could you come up and, I just have a couple of questions, and maybe some of these, might have a few more. Does anybody want to start? Maybe you. Hey Drew, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah.
So one of my questions was, you know, and, and as I read through that Senate Bill two oh one, I mean, I know it, it specifically took care of, you know, the verbiage of zoning and a few things like this, what do you think it said about conditional use permits?
As Toby has said, and excuse me, Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office, I haven't introduced myself to some of you, as Toby said, we're still working through some of the ramifications of that language. I think there's some ambiguity there in Senate Bill two oh one, and we're still working on and processing how that's going to apply to land use regulations, whether it's conditional use, permissive use, or otherwise.
Okay. So that may be still.
Yeah.
Okay. But would you say that, that, that bill specifically strikes off the county's ability to use zoning as a, as a, as a lever or a tool to route?
Not necessarily, there, the language in there, the P U C can enforce generally applicable rules, regulations, or ordinances. Still trying to figure out what that means, because right before that, the, the clause right before that says that no rule, regulation, ordinance shall apply unless otherwise directed by the P U C. So we're still working through that language and how that's going to apply to any ordinance or rule or regulation that's been adopted by planning commission and ultimately the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
This might be more than you would be able to say or know, but do you see this being legally challenged anywhere, this two oh one? And the reason I'm asking that is, and just saying, we propose, postpone this, and we try to put in some, you know, to adopt the dollar fee, a couple other things that we assume, and then it gets challenged and changed again. Do you see that maybe be possible? I know, it's hard to say, I'm just.
That'd be complete speculation. I know there's a possible referendum out there. There could easily be potential litigation. I know there's some position that it's more than one subject, so there could be litigation on that aspect, so I can't speculate.
Okay. In my end, I, I just, I'd like to put forward something that really has, you know, more definition to it, but then we don't really know where that definition is yet, so I guess I'm not saying anything. I'm just, that's just my thoughts right now.
Yeah, and, and as of what we know now, is this takes effect on July first. Could potentially litigation hinder that? Yes, I mean, I could say that, that it could, if, if litigation is filed. Could a referendum change it as well? Yes, but that's speculative of whether there's enough signatures for a referendum, and whether somebody actually files any litigation.
So that brings up an interesting thought. So if we just continue through this process, then. So if we just continue through this process, and the Board of Commissioners narrowed this down and passed one of these ordinances before that timeframe, we would actually have a period where that took effect, right? Until July 1st.
Correct.
If nothing was different, then it would maybe supersede it. But we would at least have it on the books till then?
Yes, possibly.
One other thought on that, too, Chair, is at least we'd have definitions in place by any means. I mean, whether some of the things change or not. I know it's a little thing, but I do like to have definitions in place that we don't have anywhere in our county definition.
So what happens in the case that we take one of these ordinances all the way through, we get it passed, or it passes, the Board of Commissioners, and it goes on the books, and SB 201 stays exactly how it is, makes it to, you say July 1st or June?
Correct.
Yeah, makes it to July 1st. Does that ordinance stay on the books in Lincoln County? It just gets superseded, or does it just get wiped out?
It depends.
Okay. We'd know by July 1st, yeah.
Hopefully.
Okay, very good, that answers my questions. Anybody else? Mr. Sweetard? Okay. Nothing else? Thanks, Drew. Okay. Is there a law for legal counsel? Oh, I've got a new agenda item, or an item that we have to talk about. Okay, with that, and as long as we have no more questions, I guess, for Mr. Brown or Mr. Gro, I will open the floor to public comment to people in favor of these, of one or all four of these ordinances. And would prefer, and we're going to try really hard, to keep the discussion to just these ordinances. As we've been through a lot of other testimony, currently, this is what we're talking about, these four ordinances. So anybody want to come up in favor of the ordinances? Just state your name and address, and give us your thoughts on one or all four of them. And maybe what, after you've heard Mr. Brown and Mr. Gro on how you'd like to see things, how you'd like to see things move forward, on whether it be postponed to a later date or we continue to move forward. So with that, we'll open the floor. Good evening, Mr. Ventura.
Anthony James Ventura, 47763, 292nd Streets, Hudson, South Dakota, 57034. Pleasure to be here tonight. To your reply from a few seconds ago, the townships have filed ordinance, that is the law of the county. And so I encourage you to look at the township's ordinance before we start talking about no law in Lincoln County. I think it's important that we respect their rights just like we respect ours. These ordinances are good. With the changes being made, I think the best thing you can do is table. You're going to waste a huge amount of manpower, money, from the county, and you're just going to begin one back and forth until we get something resolved. My recommendation would be table it till.
Postpone?
Postpone, excuse me, well, table or postpone, till.
You can't table it unless there's a major, unless there's a main.
August 1st or December 1st of this year. That way you cover the public referendum. If the votes come in for the, if you have enough signatures, that stops that July date. And so you need to understand that this is a living, moving thing until we get something to change. The other thing is, like I said, I think there's going to be a lot of legal contention in the way this was written. You know, stripping of the powers of the PUC, not knowing everything, it's kind of in the ordinary, but right now, as we speak in Lincoln County since 1985, you cannot build a CO2 pipeline through Lincoln County. It's only allowed to be in the industrial district. So with everybody coming in and saying we're changing things in the middle, what we're really doing is we're rewriting things because things, because they're not getting their way. And so we need to be cautious about this. But I think the best thing you can do, if you're going to do anything, if you're going to try to shove one of them, I would encourage three. But on the other hand, tabling is our smartest plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Next.
Hi, Wendy. Long time no see. I'm Wendy Hogan, 602 Laura Street in Harrisburg, South Dakota. Again, I'm just going to reiterate, yes, SB 201 did pass. It is headed for the governor. Chances are, she's not going to veto, but there is also a good chance that litigation is going to happen. There's also a referendum going. Signatures will start March 25th, as the law provides. So table, or postponing, excuse me, is probably what we would like to see. So we can, you know, we don't want to put anything, you know, the carriage, you know, the horse in front of the carriage. So that would be best, again, but number three would probably, would be what we would like to see, the conditional use permit. I would like to also point out that I know Commissioner Sweetard had, was talking about Minnehaha County's ordinance, and as I'm looking through that, one thing, you know, with Lincoln County, Minnehaha County did have the $25,000 filing fee. You know, there's a lot of talk of wanting things in line with each other was part of the problem. They, too many, you know, differences in the ordinances. You know, maybe it would be good for Lincoln County to do the $25,000 filing fee and also the $300 linear, per linear foot, excuse me, so we can all stay in line. Because that was one of the contentions with the legislation was, you know, they didn't want all the differences in the ordinances. So if the two biggest, well, not two biggest, I guess Pennington County, but if us two counties can stay in line, maybe we should be a little bit closer to Minnehaha County since theirs passed, so just wanted to say that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next. Anyone else? No? Okay. Does anybody want to speak in opposition to one or all of the ordinances?
Dwayne Carlson, 292-874-67, Centerville, South Dakota. The number one there that you had with 330 feet, that's what Lewis and Clark had for their pipeline for water distribution. That was a 54-inch pipe, if I remember right. There was no size that we have been determined here on this. 330 feet's not enough. That doesn't protect anybody if there's a problem. It doesn't matter what size the pipe is. So you really need to take a look at what can be carried in that pipe, because it's not designated that it's just going to be CO2. It's pretty open-ended. So if you're looking at trying to keep the public safe, make sure that you have a proper setback. Get it away from the people if you can. So I would just recommend that you don't put anything in right now. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Dwayne. Anyone else want to speak? Nothing? Okay. It's quicker than I thought. So we will, we'll close the floor to public comment, and I think, let's just have a little discussion. I'll let you guys start, I have a few thoughts of my own, but. Mr. Schmidt, you got ideas, thoughts?
Got a lot of ideas.
About thoughts?
I am speaking for, you know, myself and the commission in a way. Whatever action you're going to take, I probably will recuse myself, because it will ultimately end up in front of the commission to make that decision. While, Mr. Chairman, I understand you're trying to glean from the recommendations that the ad hoc committee put forward. There is some similarities, but I do kind of agree with Wendy and Tony that so much of this is going to be litigated, so much will be in courts, or there will be. And I know there is already a group, if you've read the papers, there's already a group that is formulating to collect signatures to put this on the ballot, which I don't have any problem with. So postponing or is not necessarily just kicking the can down the road. There's so many unanswered questions on this thing, and it isn't as simple as the legislature probably wanted to portray it, that, you know, we'll pass it, governor signs it, and it's over. This thing has legs, and they're, you know, they're not quiet. So I think that, from my point of view, waiting to see how this turns out is probably the best recourse that we could have, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Next, everybody? Comments, thoughts?
I will, I always go number two, so I thought I'd.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sweetard.
Well, my comment would be, listening to legal counsel say that they're still muddling through some of the legals since the Senate bill was just passed. I would like to see postponement of it. I think we, as a committee, put a lot of work into this, and now it seems like it's all kind of changed. I think it would be good for us to, we have a basis to go on, but I really believe that postponement would be the best until we have some more solid facts to go on.
I guess I listened to everybody, and I, thinking about it, and, you know, it would be nice to have some of these definitions on the books, but, you know, postponement is probably the prudent way to go, as we've learned tonight through legal counsel and reading through this. I mean, I know the governor signed the bill on, I was just looking it up, I think it was the 7th that it was signed on. So now, again, as everybody reads, there's going to be either the legal recourse or the petition being filed. I mean, this conversation's been going on for a while, so I don't necessarily see what it hurts with postponement to try to get a few more answers to see once where we're at.
Okay. Mr. Ventura?
I agree with what's been said, and, you know, as far as what Wendy said about the fees is to make sure that we're in line. And, you know, and when you look at the pipeline altogether, is $25,000 to, for the permit fee and a dollar per foot, well, you know, in the big scheme of things of, you know, the potential revenue that thing could generate, you know, that's a very small, you know, amount to me of, you know, for them to come in and say, hey, here's $25,000 plus $1 for each one of your foot, well, they're going to make that back in minimal time, so it's, you know, is that, you know, I know the law, you know, limits the dollar per foot, but is there additional things like the $25,000 application fee? Is that, is that set, or, you know, what recommendations are out there? What have other jurisdictions done? You know, so we can kind of make sure that we're, if we're going to use it as a tax relief, you know, we've all gotten our tax bills lately of, you know, they're not going down, so, you know, anything we could do to help some of those landowners would help.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to comment. You know, it's interesting, and Tony Ventura probably got a doctor's degree by now from studying this thing and traveling all over, but one of the interesting things I was reading about is 201 has kind of put this responsibility in the hands of the Public Utilities Commission, the PUC. And we haven't heard anything from the commissioners on their situation, and it gets kind of sticky, because I think one may have to recuse themselves because of a potential land route that goes through there. The other thing was, it was, if you study North Dakota, North Dakota has put a lot of their stock in their version of the PUC. So you don't really know, at this point in time, in my mind, just what parameters the PUC really has. It's one thing to say that they can vet, you know, your particular ordinances and things like that, but there's always the fine print that we haven't clarified yet. So there's a long way to go before this thing ever goes, is put to bed, in my mind.
Yeah, so I, and thank you everybody for your comments, thank the public for their comments, legal and staff for all the work they've put into it. You know, things look a lot different today than they did the end of December when we came out of our ad hoc.
That's true.
And I'm not opposed to postponement. It's probably the right thing to do than, rather than waste people's time, energy, and money. And we let this thing, you know, I look at it, it isn't going to hurt us any, the postponement. I mean, we aren't going to get behind anything, and wished we would have did something earlier, that near as I can tell. And so I do agree with Wendy Hogan and Tony Ventura, that I, if we were to do something, number three is what I would support the most. But I think that can be probably better tackled down the road once we know a few more, you know, have a little more information. So at this time, I guess what I'm going to do is entertain a motion to postpone, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to halt the motion, let's make it definitely for the August meeting. And I guess we can always strike it from the agenda then if we need to, but at least it gives us a time, gives the public a time that that's what we're going to talk about.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Yep, go ahead.
I get to go last this time? Yes, so the ad hoc committee, I don't, I know we're not, right now, looking at the four proposals they put forward, but I think the time we took on that and everything we learned as a committee, the comment we heard from both sides just helped form everything that we know today. Even though it needs to be adjusted, I think it still was a very, very good exercise and very good for the county to listen through everybody and everybody's opinions. With that said, I do feel we are very much a people's planning commission. We look out for Lincoln County citizens and the people that live here, and that's our responsibility. Now, peer has their rules and they put that forward, and we, I think, is our best interest to postpone it and adjust what we learned from what peer put forward to make it the best ordinance we can for our Lincoln County people. Yeah, the fees, like Colin said, I don't think that dollar matters much at all in the big scheme of things, but it does matter, every dollar matters. So I would, I would make that motion to postpone boarding all these four ordinances until the August meeting, so we can learn more and vent through all the legal and have a very proper document and not waste time on that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll make the second for discussion.
Okay. So basically, what we've got is we've got a motion to postpone this topic for further discussion till our August meeting.
Do we have to, do we have to set the August meeting?
We don't have to, but I think it's a good, I think it's a good, that made sense what Mr. Ventura said, and I think that's, I think it's good to have a timeout. We can always strike it, you know, if we have to, or if we want to, but at least it's there, it's out there.
What day is it, Mr. Chair? That would be August what?
The.
14th or 7th?
19th.
19th.
Okay, Mr. Brown? All right, so we've got a motion. All right, so we've got a, we've got a motion, a second, we'll call it a roll. Mr. En, Commissioner Ernsted?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Jungling?
Yes.
Mr. Sweater?
Yes.
Mr. Boots?
Yes.
Mr. Scott is also a yes. Thanks, everybody, appreciate your time, comments, we'll keep moving forward. Um, I don't believe we have any old business to discuss, so new business, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this next item, or the first item under new business, um, so on June 22 of 2022, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit. This is use 0032-2022. The applicant was Kevin Wheeler. It was for his property 47022, Terry Lane. Specifically, Mr. Wheeler applied for fireworks sales, and in the county zoning ordinance of a property zone A1 agricultural, they can apply for a conditional use for fireworks sales. This one was a little unique because the location of the property is Tower Estates, which we're all familiar with. This would be at the, what I, what I call the Harrisburg exit on the, be on the west side, but essentially, the property is occupied by a single-family dwelling and an accessory building. And so there was some dialogue with the Planning Commission with, with the proposal and with the application, and so staff did recommend approval of this application. There was really no opposition to the application, but I think it was the board's kind of concern that, that this particular property would be single-family dwelling within the neighborhood, that they wanted to review it, and so there was an eighth condition that was added on here to review, the applicant come back within two years to review the permit. Mr. Wheeler contacted staff and said, you know, he, he was well aware of it two years ago, that they needed to take place, which I'll give him credit on that one, is, because, you know, as you're aware, we have over 3,000 conditional use permits in the county, so. But, so, staff did meet with Mr. Wheeler, I did go through the conditions. I made comment that we've never received any complaints regarding this particular business. It does operate within the parameters of so many days in accordance with state statute, and so we haven't really had any issues. You know, I did reach out with different departments, and there wasn't really anything that was identified. We did not post this for a public hearing or go through that process, because the only real provision in the ordinance would be a review of a conditional use permit if they're in non-conformance with the conditions, and so really, they are in conformance in staff's opinion with, with the, with this conditions. But Mr. Wheeler was, you know, just wanted to proceed with this because fireworks season's coming up, and so wanted to make sure that, you know, that there wasn't any concerns from the board, I guess, and in accordance with the ordinance, really what we'd like to do is to just say, there's no concerns. If you have any questions, Mr. Wheeler is in attendance. I stated to Mr. Wheeler that he really doesn't have to comment anything other than if you guys have any concerns. He does make, he did make note to staff that, you know, the state fire marshal does have responsibilities to ensure the proper sale of fireworks, and I believe it's on an annual permit. There's never been an issue with, with the state fire marshal. Mr. Wheeler, you know, likes doing the operation, it's, it's kind of a family-based operation with that part of it, and so really does want to continue to do this use as allowable within the ordinance. And if there is any questions or concerns, there would be a second step that we would do other than tonight. So really, staff's asking really no action of you tonight, other than to just recognize that we did meet the condition number eight to just review it within the two years, so. Any questions for staff with that?
Questions, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, so what would be the next step? Do we, does this permit come up per year for review as the other fireworks stand, or how would this happen? I'm sure you want to do it, you know, year after year after year, how does that work?
I, I think in the file we'll just say that the condition's been met tonight, because it was really, the condition was review in two years. It wasn't like every two years, it was just to review in two years.
Two years, and then it'll, it'll just stay for good now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Unless we receive a complaint, then we would bring it to you, but really, again, it's, we haven't had any complaints, we haven't had any operational complaints, and again, like I said, I did meet with him, and we went through all seven conditions, they're in compliance with all seven conditions, so.
Yep.
Just wanted to make a record that we did comply with condition number eight. Thanks, Mr. Wheeler, he was...
Oh, you had it on a sticky note on your, on your computer, Mr. Brown.
It was number one, right at the top.
You knew it was there to go.
Yeah. If there, to be honest with you, if there's more people like Mr. Wheeler that would be cooperative and compliant with us, this, you know...
Lot better, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes, so. But without it, no action, and I guess, unless you have any questions, I said to Mr. Wheeler he really doesn't need to comment anything beyond that, so, okay?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, and I want to tell Mr. Wheeler, thank you. I remember that night, and I, we had a lot of discussion on it, and we weren't just 100% sure how it was gonna go, and I thank you for holding up your end of it, and, you know, that's since, maybe a little precedence for us, and we've done a little bit since then, and I, you're a glaring example of how well it works, so appreciate it, and thanks for, thanks for reaching out to Toby's office and making sure that everything's kosher and we're good to go, so I appreciate that. Anyone else?
I, I live next to, or in the area, and when fireworks come, everyone's, it looks like it's really clean, and everyone's having fun, and everything's really organized over there, so yeah, a good, clean spot.
Very good. Okay, seeing none. We'll close that, and thank you, sir, for coming and, and being here, and good luck this, I guess, forever now.
Thank you.
Very good.
The last item I have on the agenda is, we typically do this, we had the joint work session with the Board of Commissioners last meeting. I typically just put on agenda items for kind of a, just kind of a discussion amongst the board of any conclusions that they had. Really important this year because we do have the comprehensive plan going through the review approval process. I thought I'd point out to you, let me pull it up once here. So we did make it annoying again, so if you go to the county website...
I can say that. Yeah.
So, so that, as I mentioned before, we did do a story map with the comprehensive plan, so if you click that link to go to the story map, it's pretty informative, it goes through kind of why we're doing what we're doing, what we've done so far, and then there's some little background stuff, there was a, if you recall, there was a, at the open house that we had down here in the, at Canton, there was a news, news media that did do a story on it. But this is the more important thing that I think that, go through the surveys and ident, we did two-phase surveys, kind of the results of that, we posted everything, so we're fully transparent with kind of what we received from comments from that. And then this is the more important part really here, and this is our draft future land use map, and so we encourage anyone, including yourselves, can go on to this, and you just hit a point, and you make a, you make a, essentially, it's a, what I'll call a, some type of a, an item there, yes, or a feature that allows then you to put comments in there, and those comments would be is something that you would like about the future land use map, or if there's a particular area in the county that you want us to focus on. But really, the goal is we want to, this is the last phase of public involvement in this process, and so we want as much involvement and, and comments as we can get there, and then this will formalize just kind of the final draft part of it, and then we're hoping within, I think within probably, we'll leave this open April, and then probably May we'll come back and then have the full draft for you guys to consider a recommendation. If you recall, the most important thing that I thought of at the meeting was this future land use map. This is the guiding document, you hear me say it all the time, like, in conformance with the comp plan, not in conformance with the comp plan, it's this, you know, it's your, it's your visual map. And I think one of the things that, you know, from a staff perspective is a good thing, you know, it's a good economy, we're seeing a lot of investment, probably more so than we've ever seen, just people purchasing property, but with that comes then coming to our office and saying, well, this is our vision, our plan, you know, we're like, well, there's a vision and plan that's the plan that we have too. And so really, you know, we want to make sure that this is a representation of where we want to go as a county with that. Now, in saying that, I think one of the challenges we have is, you know, is preservation of ag and keeping rural rural and guiding everything to the municipalities with growth and development, there's a part of that, and if, that's occurring in the county, that's occurring nationwide, and I'll say it's a housing crisis, right, shortage issues, those different types of things. And so, I mean, we noticed it even today, I mean, there was multiple calls today about what can we do with our property, and, and a lot of it is, I think, financing is, can my parents live on the property, can my grandkids, and can that kind of stuff? And really, with the density that we have, it's a no, because it's like, it's an eligibility in one per quarter, quarter, but we do recognize that there's need, so, you know, staff's still working with the consultant to see if there's some things. Caution on that, though, is that this is step one of the process, right, the vision, where do we want to be with it? If we start saying things now, the public might interpret that that's where we're going in that direction, really, and really, that's a policy thing that's gonna take a whole, you know, we know the pipeline's taken us a year and a half to get somewhere with it. I mean, you know, the policy that we currently have, as Mr. Ventura said, 1995 was the real policy we adopted, the density zoning and all that kind of stuff, so it's been a long time of that policy. If we're gonna, if we're gonna change that, propose to change that, that's gonna take time, it's gonna take deliberations, it's gonna take discussion. We know that we need to do that, we needed to do that part of it. But there is things that we're gonna come back with within the comp plan and say there's some ideas, suggestions, policies that could be promoted, that won't, you know, subject us to, you know, huge changes to current policy, but we'll address some of the things we're seeing in Lincoln County and nationwide as far as the housing issues that are there, because I do think we need to talk about it, we need to look at it, and it needs to be important, it needs to be a dialogue. How we get to that point as a policy point is gonna be a long discussion about how you get to there, mainly because what I've mentioned before is, and we see it even every day, is the, the building eligibility thing really wasn't a big thing until about three years ago, you know, and now it's a, it's a commodity, it's a full-fledged, you know, people are counting on that investment for their future, for, you know, for their, for their family future, for all that stuff, so we need to be cautious with that. But in saying that, I know that we're gonna have to do some further study and analysis on it, I think the policy's in there, and then we proceed with that part of it, so. But in saying that, the, the one item that you had last month that did get appealed to the Board of Commissioners, so that's the oversized accessory building, and I think that Commissioner Sweeter stated it at the meeting, that this is an issue that, and I'll say it's, it's the urbanization of the, the area, the rural area, it's really, it's, it's an issue that's occurring, and, and we see it every day, the board's fin, is gonna be starting seeing that with some of the appeals we're seeing and things like that, but there, there's a differing opinion in my, in my opinion of what rural quality life is in the county. And so the policies are, you know, there's, there's, there's gonna be some challenges that we have moving forward, so, with it, you know, the challenges, neither good nor bad, just is what it is, so. So with that, I'll stop rambling, and I want you guys to really share your thoughts of the joint work session, and anything that we can continue to work on as a department, so. Thank you.
You know, commissioners, you read in the paper, Lincoln County grew by 12.6%, if you read that. That puts Lincoln County in the top 10 nationally for counties our size. The challenges that that presents is just, that's best articulated in what you just said, Toby, because it's not gonna get any easier trying to maintain a rural area when literally every day you get a call from a retiring individual that has, you know, eligibility's. And the one I cite, which is most troubling, and not troubling, but concerning, the gentleman is, in his, he and his wife have no heirs, and they have, live on 160 acres with three eligibility's, and he bought a adjoining 160 acres with no buildings on it, but has four eligibility's. He potentially has seven building sites in the absolute heart of ag country, and seven, that changes everything, you know, and, and, you know, from a county perspective, everybody would say, well, isn't it wonderful to have a new house? Actually, it costs counties money to have a house in the middle of ag country.
More than it would return.
It does, I mean, there's no doubt about it, you just, you, you add costs, so I don't have, I don't have an answer, but when we start talking about what we're doing here for a vision or for this comp plan, it's probably the most strategic thing we're gonna do for this county for the foreseeable future, because when you look down the road, we're 60, oh, we're bumping 70,000. If you continue to grow at 10%, you know, you're gonna be 100,000 people, and we're like, you know, they can't all be stacked up in apartments and condominiums up north, you know, they throw those things up overnight, for God's sakes. So trying to manage that, this is a challenge for you guys, so I think you'll be making history.
Thanks, Commissioner Schmidt, and, and I'm just gonna build on that a little bit, because that is one of the, that's obviously one of the hottest topics we've probably talked about in the last, since I've been on this thing, anyway.
Been a while.
Um, and, and I think what it really just comes back to, and you, and you brought up a great point, you know, I think, I think to the, to the observer, you, you see four new houses go up in the coun, in the country, and you think, oh, great, that's, that's, that, that's a revenue source for the county, when, when in actuality, it's a, it's a financial drain, each one of them almost that goes up. And, and so just more reason, and this board has done a, I think, has been very consistent and done a very good job, that those, those types of, that type of growth and that type of development should happen for the municipalities out. The municipalities are prepared to, to deal with that, they also have the lever of a sales tax to handle some of these things. And, and so that will be my stance, that, that we continue to, that we, we continue to, to drive development towards the municipalities and work out from there, along with all the other issues we've talked about, about municipalities growing into developments, and what that's gonna look like, right? For, for homeowners that bought a house and really probably had no idea what they were getting into, and 10 years later, they're like, wow. You know, that's, that's a big thing, so, those are just my comments on that. And I, and I will say, I, I think from a land use standpoint, Toby, I mean, you see it, that's what we deal with the biggest is, and, and this, this trend lately of buying a piece of property, knowing exactly how many housing eligibility's you have, and then, and then coming and wanting to rezone it to rural residential so you can get more housing eligibility's, that, that seems to be popular, and I think we've done a good job on that, but that has to, I think we continue to stay consistent on that, because otherwise, I mean, you make a great point, it just waters down the, the housing eligibility, or we could, if we're, the housing eligibility just won't go away then, you know? So, so no, thanks for everything you guys have done on this, and I thought, me personally, I thought the, the joint jurisdiction, or the, the joint meeting between the Planning Commission, the County Commission was as productive a one as we've had since I've been on the board, and so, Commissioner Schmidt, relay back to your comrades at the County Commission level, thanks for their participation and dialogue and comment, because I think, I think inevitably, what we deal with, you guys gotta deal with, and we all gotta be, we all gotta be, you know, I wouldn't say working on the same page, but at least understand where everybody's coming from.
See, I think, you know, you guys do the heavy lifting, because if you read this, you guys are the guardian of the, of the, of the plan, of our comp plan. You really are, you're the first line of defense. We only hear, may hear, you know, where they appeal, but I think Planning and Zoning Board has, has an awesome responsibility. So I'm not just trying to throw nice things back, but I always felt that way. You guys, you guys have got the responsibility of enforcing the comp plan that is in place. You guys, you guys have got the responsibility of enforcing the comp plan that is in place. So, uh, I thank you. Not gonna get any easier.
Mr. Jungling?
Yeah, one thing, one other thing I took out of the, uh, joint session was, and what Commissioner Schmidt just said is, we do have people who want to move here, and we do want to find room and all that for them. That's why I would like to encourage any joint commissions to really work with the county. And we have a great relationship with the city of Sioux Falls, and I think we're on the same page. We want growth, we all want growth, we just want it done the right way. And if we could encourage the other smaller towns around, you know, all of them, if we could be on the same page and have continuous meetings and be able to grow then, that's, uh, that need for people to move here, I think that'd be a great thing. So, again, I'd encourage some joint commissions with the other cities in the county.
Yep. Yeah, I agree, I think that's gonna be super important as we go forward, um, you know, Harrisburg, Worthing, Lenox, Canton. Um, because if we, if we make policy and do things outside of their municipality that they have to deal with five to ten years down the road, that doesn't make any sense, so. Well, very good. Thanks, guys, appreciate it. I have one last thing on new business, um, uh, that, that I just, I wanna visit about and see if anybody's interested. Um, I had brought it up a while back, maybe, I don't even remember, it was in last fall, something like that. Um, I think in the form of an email to the commission, um, that, to reach out to Russell Swanson, our FFA teacher here at Canton, and come to do, uh, a little work session on parliamentary procedure and just, just answer some questions. Um, because we do get some questions on, on how we properly do that. Russ's background would be is that he's, he's got a lot of years in, in, uh, coaching and teaching the Canton FFA team in parliamentary procedure. And I've leaned on him personally, um, it's helped me a lot, both with here and township and church things. So, um, he has, I've reached out to him, he is, he is willing to come to next month's meeting. Wouldn't have to be very long, but if, if I've, I think I've got a few questions that I could, I, I would ask him and I think would help all of us, and then if you guys had any questions on just procedurally, how we should do some things, um, he'd be a great resource. And so, um, just, if, if that's something, if, if people be interested, um, probably just take a motion and a second, um, to have them put on the agenda as a work session for the April meeting.
I'll make that motion, Boots.
Good.
Second, instead.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Good idea.
You get that on there, Toby? Yep, next month.
I don't think it'd hurt, because I mean, we're up here, we've all run meetings somewhere along the way, but it never hurts to get a refresher course every few years, just to kind of remind you where you're at.
You know, Mr. Chairman, when people come in, half these guys have been practicing at home. Read about it online and they get all.
I am excited for Commissioner Schmidt to listen to that.
You mean I never follow the rules?
Well, I, you know, and I'll just say, you know, I, I, I've, I've never had any formal Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Procedure training and it's just, it's just all come by being on boards and you learn a little bit here and learn a bit, a little bit there and, um, you know, it's not something super difficult, but it, uh, you know, just, just, just the example of the difference between tabling and postponement. I mean, I think that is something that gets misused and misunderstood dramatically, um, too often. And just something simple like that, to have that explained to us on what the proper way to do that, I think would be good. Um, and, and not only does it help in, 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 on this commission, but, you know, it's, it's what you use at your township meetings, your church councils, your, whatever other types of organizations you're gonna be on. So, um, if Russ is willing to do it, I just thought it'd be a good, be a good opportunity for us, so. We'll just, we'll put that at the end of the meeting as a, as just a work session, question and answer.
Eric, I think it's a great, but what Commissioner, our now Commissioner Sweater was referring to when it was Auditor Sweater had ample, had ample opportunity when yours truly chaired the meeting. Sometimes we lacked, uh, the proper protocol and, uh.
We did try the Roberts Rules of Books every once in a while, but to no avail.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, Jungling. Second, instead.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good job.